Why?
Okay, I think we're recording.
Yes, we are. Okay. Thank you, Joe, for that reminder. I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is six thirty-four P M. Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. This meeting will be available on the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube channel within twenty-four hours and should also be available on Willingnet TV's channel within twenty-four hours as well. If we could call the role, we'll start alphabetically by last name.
Owen here.
Conroy here.
Constantine here.
Elvin, no idea why that didn't work, but Elvin Byron is here.
Okay, thank you. So the first item on our agenda is the discussion of bid results, value engineering, and next steps. We talked about this extensively on Thursday, but Jake, Joe, do you want to chime in?
Sure. The the Field and Track Project Committee met on Friday afternoon and went through each of the potential scope reduction, value engineering, modification type items, same as what we did with the school committee. But we got into the the details more on on some of the items along with what some of our alternatives are and potential approaches to trying to claw claw back some of those items into the project at some point. I can certainly fill you in on all of that detail. The end result was at the end of the meeting. The question was raised of, do we do we recommend a a pause where i- i- if we don't make a decision pretty quickly here, we will know that we'd be moving to next year at some point with redesigning or raising additional funds to be able to bring more into scope, things like that. Or we vote in favor of incorporating the measures that the project team recommended and going back out to bid. It's kind of a tha- that's our current binary choice. And the Field and Track Project Committee, the only member who was not present was was Carrie. And that committee voted in favor unanimously of saying, let's go on ahead and do take the steps that the project team recommends and put it back out to bid. That's the recommendation that that committee makes to the school committee. I would love to walk you through details of items if you would like, but I also want to just like leave it up at that level for a minute and then we can get into the weeds more.
Would it would it help to have a formal motion to accept the recommendation and move back to bidding?
Yes, I think that would be helpful.
Then I do what I just said.
Well, i- i- if I may, I I think the full the full motion tonight would be to reject all of the current bid results, to make the modifications as recommended by the project team and to put the project back out to bid. So it's like the the three-step process. That's what the committee would be recommending.
So I I'm happy to do that. And of course, in the course of the discussion, we might change some of the things we're putting out or whatnot, but as a starting motion, I think that's a great place to start.
Okay, um, would somebody like to second Steve's motion, Curtis? Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion. Jose, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Christina. Joe, I think we I think I asked this question at our at our last meeting. I'll be honest, I don't know if I heard a a strong enough answer or one to or an answer that would give me would inform me well enough to make a decision one way or the other tonight. And I guess the question is, and we heard it, I think, from the folks that were present from Skanska and and the other firm that was there, that by requesting lump sum bids, those bids, we are not sure, and other than conversations we had with our lowest bidder or several of our lower bidders, you know, we're unsure where the bid estimates came in so high. So, you know, it's unclear in terms of like how we go about. I know right now we have a proposal that is an informed proposal of a way for to to hopefully get the cost down by a by an appropriate amount. Maybe I'll start off, Joe, just asking the design that we sent out to bid. Do we know what percent completion those designs were? Were they sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety? Were they one hundred percent designs that went out? And the reason why I'm asking is if they weren't, if we didn't pay for, you know, ninety percent designs, it sounds like, given the information that we received, that that contractors or folks that that submitted bids had to assume a lot of risk because there were a lot of uncertainties in the proposed proposal documents that were not precisely laid out. And that could be a part of the reason why the bids came in so inflated. I don't know if that's my my thinking, what what I'm learning through these conversations is accurate, but you know, can you inform us with regards to how complete our designs are or were that went out for bid?
Sure. So from a contractual and process perspective, they went out to bid when they were a hundred percent complete as far as construction design documents. So that's part one. Part part two is the areas that we've been able to identify as having enough gray area or complexity that didn't feel like the contractor felt very comfortable with the specification. Those were limited. So, oh, for instance, the irrigation design, because we're attached to a well system, because we're attaching to an existing water supply inside of our building that itself is a well system. And and there's a fair amount of their decent number of moving parts there. That's an area that everybody had already identified as being it it's it's messy because it's it's kind of like a renovation task. And in addition, on top of that, in order to make that, i- i- it isn't like you're just hooking up to a to a town water system somewhere with a with a well-known three-inch pipe. So that's an area where where we knew going in that irrigation was was complex, but but highly desirable. That's one. For the rest of it, you know, i- it does seem as though some areas, like, for instance, the topsoil specification. It was very detailed, and it was something that I think C H A felt that being the architecture firm felt very comfortable with, you know, th- th- they wanted to to highly control the specification for the soil. And and they know that in big projects in the Boston area that they've worked on or on high-end projects for, say, colleges and universities, that people truck in the soil from distances and they happily do it and they and they make their money off of it. I I think that they were surprised by the degree to which some of the contractors just phoned in saying, this is a tough soil to just drop at a high school. You know, we're we're gonna have to drive potentially an hour and a half of something that's been carefully mixed by a provider in some areas. Like, that's an area where perhaps it was actually over-specified. Rather than saying, here, here's what we want to get at, and we're going to leave it up to you and our conversations throughout the process to ensure that we do. Instead, it was saying, here's a very tight specification that we want to meet, go on ahead and do it. So I would actually say that in some of these areas, like the topsoil, perhaps the i- i- if you call it a criticism, the criticism would be that you over-specified it. You made it so that I needed to reach out to only a few vendors in New England, and I'm stuck into a cost structure that I I would really rather not, and I think I can deliver a comparable product to you without all of that. So that's more of the feedback that we heard that that perhaps raised costs in in a couple of different areas. It's a little bit of a rambling answer, but I think that's kind of where we were looking.
Yeah, Christina, is it okay if I follow up?
Of course.
Thank you, Joe, for that. You know, one of the responses we received on Thursday about why we pursued a a lump sum bid and not a line item bids within a within our bid documents was that we would have to be incredibly precise with respect to how much material we would need. For instance, topsoil, we would need to be incredibly precise with with respect to every element of of the build and and construction. And what we heard is the reason why we didn't do that is that we would we would then assume the risk. Like, if we got it wrong or our architects and design team got it wrong, and there weren't enough material to go around, then we we bear that cost. Instead, we, you know, we are asking our our contractors to assume that cost. And of course, they don't know how much material is going to be required at the end. And so they, you know, one risk is that they then have to cover their potential losses and inflate that cost to cover their base. Going forward, just imagine if if we as a committee tonight, you know, turned down this this vote down this motion because we wanted a different bidding procedure. We wanted to see us take on that risk and be incredibly specific with every element that we wanted or that was required by the project and then would ask bidders to provide cost estimates or bid estimates for every element of a design. Or we why wouldn't that be an approach that we should pursue?
So, per the Mass General Laws, which we fortunately or unfortunately need to abide by, our only method of getting this project going with a construction firm is to put it out in a bit and and put it out to bid in a way where we award the contract to the lowest bidder, to the lowest bidder who can prove themselves to be qualified to do the work. Now that said, we could legally say, and oh, by the way, we want you to submit a lot of detail within that. So so we're still bound to, we 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 can't then look at it and say, all right, so I want this line and this line, and I think that line's crazy. You're gonna have to knock that one down in order for you to get this contract, you know, in in the way that a private firm can and and regularly does. So but but we could conceivably say, w- w- we want you to, as a part of this, to give us all of the detail in order to prove that you're qualified, but the state might not even allow that because I I think it it's abnormal enough that the state would say, so you're telling somebody that they need to expose all of their secrets of how they get work done for a good price. A- a- and I think that's where that's where Aaron of Skanska was going, was that it's there's no convenient way within procurement law to declare that in order for you to be qualified, you need to provide all of the details of how you came up with your number.
If I could just, sorry, Joe, I wasn't, this is not about, you know, bidders proving worth or or, you know, qualification. This is more about who assumes risk and how that risk is translates into cost. And I think without detailed specifications regards to, you know, construction materials and and the like, we're asking bidders to assume that risk because we don't, and from what we were told, I think, quite directly on Thursday, those details weren't provided. Even though we might have provided, you know, characteristics of the topsoil that we wanted, it sounds like there are lots of unknowns that we were assuming bidders would, lots of risks that we we were assuming bidders would would assume. So the question is, is how do we get our cost down? Is there a way for us to move forward to do the bid differently in a way that we assume the risk, but it lowers the cost and the bulk of our project can get completed? Or I think this is the part it's unclear to me, moving forward, that that that's not a viable solution. And so it's difficult to to make a judgment from me at the moment on this particular motion that we have before us.
Yeah, I I would say that within Massachusetts procurement law, that there is, we 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 could put out specifications that indicate how many how many yards of each thing, but more than that, I think it's probably also, how many hours are you going to be required to operate equipment before you get to charge us more money? How many people do you need to bring on site? How many different pieces of equipment? And 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 that's just not a way. I I think that tha- that's not a way that any of the experts that we have working for us have ever put out a municipal job to to bid. That doesn't mean that it's not technically possible. It it's just not the way the work is done within this industry within this procurement method, which is lowest bidder who's qualified receives the receives the the contract.
And and sorry, fond, very fond of questions. Sorry, Joe, do I think one way to hear your response is that municipalities and 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 municipal, you know, entities, much like our 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 school district. One way to hear what you just said is that, you know, when construction projects are go go out to bid, the bid documents only require lump lump sum bids. That's that's the standard. That's what everyone does and and no one does differently. As I think that's one way to hear what you said, because if if it's not true, the question would be, why didn't we do that? Yeah.
That tha- that is definitely true. The one bit of wiggle room that I would add is that you can technically, and and we already had a a pretty decent array within our request. We y- y- you can say and provide unit costs associated with a number of other things that we might want to to add on. But contractors tend to tend to respond to unit cost requests not so favorably because, of course, they gain better economies of scale when you say, well, I need at least five thousand yards of topsoil. Whereas when you say, well, and then give us a price for each yard of topsoil in addition, tha- that's going to be a higher unit price than what they do when they bid, looking at the at the specification. So it's it's a long way to way of saying you you can maybe get at this problem in a couple of different ways, but it's well outside the wheelhouse of how bidding laws work in Massachusetts right now, where where it is truly the only method that we have is to provide the best specifications that we have and then either accept or reject the lowest qualified lump sum bidder. That's and and this, to me, it also goes back to if this was not a public procurement project, the the path that we had wanted to try to take, but the state did not allow us to, was to look at this as a design-build project, where where we would go and we would work with a firm to very interactively say, well, what if we use this material? How much will it cost? What if we use that one? Which which is a way that, for instance, local colleges tend to build things. They 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 move through it as though it's a as though it's a constant menu where they're picking and choosing and they're constantly refining. And unfortunately, we're just not allowed to do that because the state doesn't trust us to do it. For lack of a better way to put it. Does that address the question?
Yeah, thank you, Joe. That was the very helpful. Thank you.
Julia?
So I I appreciated Joe's line of or Jose's line of questioning. And and Jose, for what it's worth, that has been my experience too. I think it's some mix of municipalities and schools or governmental agencies wanting to have a certainty about a price rather than it, you know, if you build something in your home, it can be twice as much as you thought you were gonna, you were gonna have to pay. And that the market would drive down the amount that the overhead that companies would seek in risk. My question to you, Joe, I asked this, I also asked this on Thursday and wasn't thrilled with the results, not from you guys, but from our folks outside. I and it's not necessarily, I guess it's more preemptive around the next round because we are where we are now. I I know when we did public bidding with an O P, you know, certified O P M., et cetera, et cetera. And our bid came in high. Our lowest bidder, you know, we accepted the bid and then did change orders to shift the cost down. And I just wonder, we almost, I mean, it was almost like we moved into a design-build process with our contractor, but after they won the bid through the same channels. And just they just allowed us, they worked with us to bring our costs down. And I you know, I guess I would want to still explore that, especially if our next bid is again over, which feels like it keeps going over, assuming we do go out to bid. As I said to Jake, and I'll say it here because I don't think we're here we are, but I I it feels like we're paying a lot it for a lot of, it's like a meteorologist. Our our estimates are like meteorologists. They are able to be really wrong, and we keep going back. So anyway, that's my question. I are we really not allowed to do that? Because I've been in projects before where we've done that.
Always tough in public meetings, isn't it? Per procurement law orders. If if and and we can deduct things, so we can deduct things and we can add things. If a competing bidder then looks at the project as it's going through and hears about, well, here's here's what the new total price is, or here's how they modified it. If they feel as though we changed enough that they would have bid it differently and that they should have gotten the contract, they have a credible complaint to lodge with the state that can then create all kinds of additional liabilities and hassles for us. And and the reason the law works that way is that there are some municipalities where historically, they might have said, sure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell my friend to just put in an insanely low low number, so that they are definitely the lowest bidder. And then I'm gonna work with them. I'm gonna add some things, remove a couple, I'm gonna turn it into a process that I will enjoy and where I I feel like I can control it. And so the law tries to avoid that kind of potential favoritism. So for that reason, w- w- we can do deducts, we can do adds. But if it starts to look as though and if it is something where we materially change the project, we could get into trouble. I'm trying to say all this in a way where it like it's a recorded me, but like that, that's kind of, I think that's the
For clear, super clear. There's a there's a limit to that as a strategy. A real limit to that. Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm, I don't mean to be cryptic.
That wasn't cryptic. It was
I would also like nothing more than to get into this project and to make sure we get the things done that we want to get done. We just need to make sure that when we accept that bid that we're close enough that we've got just the the little tweaks as opposed to the bigger bigger things.
Yeah. And and what I'm hearing from from some parents in the community is these kids need a track. Let's make it happen. That's what I'm hearing. Any other questions for Joe? Jake, should we list off the ten items? So essentially, our motion is reject the bids, accept the removal of the ten items and go back out to bid. So it may be helpful to put those ten items, if we can, up on the screen. And if if you want to go through them again, Joe.
Sure. Jake, would you mind either sharing or or if you give me sharing privileges, I've I've got it right up in front of
You you should be able to share it now, Joe. If it's not working, Joe, I can grab it.
It is. I'm just, I I've got too many.
I understand.
All right, can can everybody see? And is it clear what I've got up on the screen here?
Yes.
All right. So a- as we move through these ten items, the provide infrastructure only for A V system, we confirmed on Friday that the the forty thousand dollars that we are imagining being or hoping that will be removed from bidders figures. That's a forty thousand dollar figure where we could we could go and acquire that set of components off the shelf and install it at any point in time. So this is an item where it truly is, if i- if we have the funds, we can get it done without any problem whatsoever now as a part of the project or immediately following. So we we just made sure that we walked through that. The revised topsoil and root zone. We broke the conversation within the the Field and Track Project Committee into two areas. What's the impact on the playing field on the interior of the track? And then what about all of the other disturbed area outside of the track that is not for sports purposes, but that would be disturbed as a part of the project? And so on the interior of the track, C H A confirmed that they would have no problems having a specification that didn't lock us into certain vendors as much, but that would yield the exact same end result for that playing field. So that's good. On the outside, and and so that would see some some of this cost reduction. On the outside of the track, the conversation went to given that there's enough good organic material in that area north of the administration and and multipurpose building right now, that we could instruct the contractor to simply bring up some of that existing topsoil, screen it to remove any stones and other debris and then use that for the area on the outside, which means we're not trucking in a a a nice high-end topsoil. Instead, we're saying what goes on the outside of that track area that people will be walking on will be mowing, but it won't be used for for playing any sport. We feel comfortable with that. So that's that's where that conversation went. And C H A confirmed, yes, this will produce cost savings. And it's it's a very worthwhile thing to do. So that's how the committee viewed that one. Remove irrigation system, third. This is the one, as we move down through here, where we're going to have the largest set of continuing conversations, because if we remove irrigation, we still need a solution upfront for making sure the sod is well taken care of by the contractor. If we say to the contractor, you need to provide all irrigation equipment and provide all water, we could be in for for another big big number from them saying, well, if I need to do that, here's what it's going to cost you. And so we're working with C H A and Skanska i- if we're going to go forward in this way to do two things. One is to make sure that that we have a portable irrigation system or enough irrigation components that we've got the right equipment on site to be able to do it. That's part one. Part two is we need to make sure that we can draw from our existing water supply to provide the water for that for the purposes upfront, so that we don't have bidders saying, well, now I need to truck in fifty thousand gallons of water a week. And so we we need to make sure that as we move through the process to go out to bid, that C H A keeps that very well in mind and that we come up with a solution that, yes, it removes the great permanent irrigation system that we had wanted, but that we get enough things going that we don't end up in a situation where the bidder's coming back with large larger numbers than we want because they're saying, well, we need to do all of this essentially for you in order for us to do our jobs. So there's going to be a lot of continued attention there. Within drainage redesign, C H A feels as though they can execute some of the simplification, some of the decrease in the very expensive components, the manifolds and things, and come up with a simpler flow while having the same capacity, same end result. And so this would be an area where they would spend a fair amount of time before this goes out to bid, trying to make sure that while working within all of their before this goes out to bid, trying to make sure that while working within all of their, all of their constraints and needs, that, that they do simplify what a contractor would need to supply in terms of components in order to get this going. Um, so that's drainage redesign. Change walkways to gravel or chip seal. Um, this is one where we, we talked about the idea that if we move away from asphalt walkways to gravel or chip seal, um, what does it mean? It means, uh, we're not gonna wanna plow those, but we, we probably won't be plowing snow up there, even if it was asphalt, you know, that there is no winter sport that requires plowing that area. Um, Nordic d- does not need that, nor does any other winter sport. Um, so we feel comfortable with that change, um, after we talked through it for about five, 10 minutes. Um, the allow temp fence, um, this is one that felt pretty straightforward, um, given, given the, the project requirements and, and what we could put out there for a contractor. Um, whether or not we get all of that $25,000 as far as, as far as credit for not having, um, as many, uh, requirements, um, we're not wholly sure, but, but it's there and it makes sense to modify the bid documents to reflect that. Um, remove bleachers from scope, um, the bleachers in the, this means remove bleachers and press box. Um, they were the ad alternate within our first bid process. The, the committee eventually agreed that, um, rather than creating an environment where we have a few different tiers of ad alternates and, um, we are trying to thread the needle on it. If we remove the bleachers and press box, w- we know where and how we would acquire them as we go through the project or after the project, if funds are available, and they are the type of thing where we'll be able to get them in place um, without, uh, a real, um, hit in terms of um, incremental costs associated with not having done it upfront as a part of the base, base package or the, or the contract. Um, so we feel comfortable with that. The remove bleacher subbase and concrete. This is the one where the committee was, I believe unanimous in its belief that we really want to see this happen, even if it's in slightly reduced form as a part of the project, because it is literally the foundation on top of which you can then, um, say, let's, let's get bleachers here. Let's, let's raise the money, let's do it. Without it, yes, you can have a mini construction project later that that excavates and that puts down layers of subbase and that puts concrete on top. But if we've got it there, we're in much better shape to be able to say we're ready for one of those crowning jewels on the project. So we, we made the request of CHA and Skanska to give that some thought and to either have it as an, an ad alternate, as the ad alternate for the project, or to come up with a way to specify, um, that we wanted unit costs, and we, we talked about that earlier in the meeting, say, wh- what would it take to do 10 square feet of subbase, 10 square feet of concrete, so that we can then as a, as an as a change order, as we go through the project, say, great, we've, we've got the money, let's, let's get it done. So what we posited to them was w- which way are we gonna end up with better pricing? Are, are we gonna end up with better pricing if it's sitting there as an ad alternate? Or if it's sitting there as a, as a unit cost type item, um, or pair of items? Um, and so they were gonna go back and take a look at that and figure out how they would specify it in each way and implement whichever one they felt was gonna yield lower overall costs, um, by the end of the project. Um, remove waterline relocation from scope, um, that ended up feeling like a no-brainer. Um, it was one of those things where a- after we looked at it again, um, we, we, we wished it had been a part of the initial bid. Um, there, there is no reason that we can find to not remove the waterline relocation from the scope. Removing the existing drainage maintenance from scope, um, this is one where, uh, the, so the, the, the topic is, we have an existing drainage network, um, out around and, and stemming off of the, um, the old track. So over in that corner of campus, um, it has not received a lot of attention in decades as far as cleaning it out and, and, and doing things with it. Um, so we had as a part of the original project scope, wanted to make sure that, that cleaning those out, jetting them out, making sure that, that they were as clean as can be, um, was a part of the project scope. Um, we're comfortable removing it because it is the kind of thing where we don't take a cost hit by doing it separately, really. Um, and we can potentially work it into some sort of annual operating budget project, um, going forward. So it's, it's something that, that can be removed, just as long as we make sure that we stay on top of um, getting it done at some point over the next few years, so that we feel really good about that corner of campus and, and the drainage that's there. Um, so all in all, by the time we were done with it, we, we were feeling as though CHA and Skanska were pretty confident, knowing that we, we don't wanna go through the same set of false hopes that we did, uh, during the previous round. They were pretty confident that, that we would get close to this $1.4 million reduction. Um, and the project committee, we, we talked about, we have $3.5 million readily available from the college gift. Um, we have $100,000 from the community preservation, um, and $800,000 in borrowing ability and um, plenty of reason right now to fundraise as best we can between, um, now and the time that the project, uh, is completed. Um, and so when you add up all of those numbers, um, we get to about 4.4 that's readily available and we can, we can, um, fundraise on top of that. Um, if we were to get the full 1.43 in um, cost reduction, um, the total project cost would be, um, at 4.2. Um, so we would have a couple hundred thousand dollars of wiggle room as we stand right now. But again, I think everybody's attitude during the meeting on Friday was don't repeat history if at all possible. Do you feel confident that we're gonna be able to get there with this list? Um, and the answer from the project team was yes, because it, it'll look really bad if, if, i- i- if we don't, um, for them, you know, for them as firms and, and as professionals. So that's how we closed the meeting with a unanimous vote in favor of saying, let's go on ahead and do this. And the final bit of detail that I would add is, um, CHA did say that because they wanna make sure that they do these removals and simpli- simplifications overall in a way that will feel wonderfully coherent, where they're ready for speaking to potential bidders and, and letting them know exactly what's changed and, and not having anything that creates confusion, um, as a part of this. Th- they did say that, that they would, they would feel much more comfortable having a couple weeks before it then gets posted and goes out. This is not the kind of thing that they wanna try to do over the course of just a few days or, or a week. Um, so that was one other item that, that we talked about. Um, Skanska understood and agreed, and I certainly agree that I, I, I think we've got, we've got some time here, um, this fall before we need to have it out to bid. And if CHA needs a couple weeks to be able to, to do the best job that they can, um, that it's well worth it. And so we should make sure that it goes out when it's ready. Still in the, in the sweet spot of fall bidding before people have, um, lined up their contracts for next year. So that's what we covered.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, um, Julia has her hand up. Julia, do you mind waiting for Steve? Okay, go ahead, Steve.
So I just wanna, uh, thank Joe and all the administration for all the work that they're doing on this. Um, this is of course, one of the reasons why we tried to have the bid earlier rather than later, so we still have time and don't lose another year. Uh, one thing that Joe said that really resonated with me was about the dangers of repeating history. And unfortunately, right now, the history of the district is constantly pushing things to the future and hoping things will get better. And unfortunately, all that seems to happen is the price goes up and we spend more money on development and we spend a tremendous amount of time of administrator hours, you know, working on stuff like this. And so I just wanna support in the strongest possible way of going forward and getting this back to bidding. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Julia?
Um, and can I confirm, we heard on, on Thursday that it was a a couple hundred dollars to put this back out to bid?
Yes.
So, so the risk at hand for putting this out to bid, if we're okay with those, um, value engineering items, it's a couple hundred dollars. And if, and I would agree with Steve, if we wait, we thought we built in an escalation cost and the escalation cost was, you know, way off. Um, it feels like it's not a big risk to make to try to do it now.
I've, I've asked that question of CH and Skanska a couple times over the last couple of weeks and, and they've, they've always said, yep, that's, that's the only, that's the only cost that you're encouraging here.
Great question. Thank you, Julia. Jose?
Thanks, Christina. Um, could we just reread the motion, uh, just to make sure we're all on the same page with what we're deciding? And then I'll likely have a follow-up question if I, if I understand it all correctly.
Sure. My understanding of the motion is that we would, we are rejecting the bids as presented. We are accepting the 10 items on the list we just, um, reviewed and reviewed last week and we, um, vote to get the new bids out, um, with those changes.
Thank you, Christina. Um, and then Joe, in your, uh, in, in, in what you shared with us, for instance, in the surface for future bleachers, you know, there are some items on this list that you, I think hinted that could be either included in, um, our call for bids or however the language called, is, is called, uh, as, as, is it an ad alternate? Is that, are we can, or any of these items, could they be considered ad alternates? Or in, in what you were describing to us, were you suggesting that some of these items, like the base for future bleachers, those could be added to the design that contractors will bid on?
The, the items where that would apply would be for the, for the subbase and the concrete pad. The project committee said, are we better off financially having that as our ad alternate? Meaning as our thing where at the time that we accept the contract, we either say, yep, you, you came in low enough of the base that we can add that on top. Um, we, we asked them, are we better off having it as an ad alternate in that way? Or having a unit cost request, which, which we have for a number of different things. Um, having a unit cost request where per 10 sque- 10 square feet of subbase, how much are you gonna charge us if we have a change order as a part of the project and per 10 square feet of six inches of concrete? How much are you gonna charge us? We, we've said, w- 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 we, we want to do whichever one is projected to yield the best pricing. And, and I think where they're, are gonna go is they're gonna say the subbase and the concrete can be an ad alternate because it's, it's very discreet. It, it doesn't bring in lots of, uh, contingencies or dependencies for how they're bidding it. They can comfortably say, here's the base. And sure, if you want that, that area there done, here's how much additional we, w- we want. So I'm pretty sure that's what they're gonna come back with. Um, and that's what, what we would then want to do. Um, in terms of the AV system, that's one where, rather than having it as a part of the construction, a- as a part of the, the contract, instead, it's something where if the, if the, if the base number comes back and the ad alternate number comes back, and if we say, yep, and we've got a hundred thousand dollars more that we can spend to try to get more of what we originally wanted to get done, then we can go out and get five different quotes for that system from five different vendors. We can order it and we can have it installed. Um, as the project is going through, without having it being a part of the, the contractors', um, bid and what they are supplying, what they are acquiring for us um, as a part of their work.
Right. Does, does that mean that this motion needs to be amended to allow for that flexibility? Or it sounds like Christina says no. So I don't know, um, since the mo- the moment, we're pulling these 10 items off of the design and we don't need to meet again to decide, you know, a path forward with regards to, for instance, the bleacher, the base for the bleachers. Um, that can be decided by the a different committee, it sounds like, by the subcommittee.
I think it gets decided by the experts. Cause they're the ones that are putting our best interest forward with this next, with this bidding process. That's the way it sounded, Joe. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I, I think, y- yeah, I mean, the, the, the list there is, that's the stuff that's gonna be removed from the base package. And from, I, I, I think that the most descriptive, i- 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 if we want and are comfortable with a longer motion, what we, what we might say to cover all of our bases would be we're going to reject the bids. We are going to incorporate the cost reduction findings and optimize for the best way to potentially add the subbase and concrete back in and get the project back out to bid. I think that's.
Yes, and that, that optimize, that sort of, I don't wanna use code word, but what we mean, I think it's to be clear, what we would mean by this amendment is that this committee would be okay with however the decision played out in terms of cost efficiency, you know, whether we, um, this, you know, whether the, um, the advice we were given is this, this should go in as a change order. You know, fa- uh, you know, after construction or whatever that might look like, or get included as an ad alternate. So we as a committee, I, I would prefer that amendment so that we are on record for saying that we're okay with however this might play out. But I also wanna, you know, open it up to the floor for folks who might want to, I mean, this might be an opportunity for folks to advocate for other ad alternates, you know, this, this, this is probably the time to do so, if fo- folks other thought, other items on this list should be included as an ad alternate.
Um, let me ask Steve and Curtis if they're first okay with the language change to that motion. Curtis is okay, Steve?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any, um, further discussion around, um, other items? Jose?
And this is very brief, and I, um, just curious about the, and I think we heard the answer to this question. Or maybe, you know, the, this concern addressed on our, at our Thursday meeting was around the irrigation. Um, that the cost of not having the field irrigated would mean that the playing surface would be playable for a shorter duration of the year. So I can't remember what the actual costs in terms of playability and, and upkeep. But I would like to, to revisit that really briefly, because that would be something we would be bearing or agreeing to bear.
So w- without irrigation, um, there are a few different negative impacts to the, to the complex that we will have. Um, one is that, um, if we have periods of extended drought, it will be more difficult to keep the field green and playable. Now, climate change, everything else going on in the world, it's difficult to project how much we're gonna wish that we could control the environment there if we look out 20 years. Right now, what CHA would say was within your area, y- y- you typically don't need irrigation at all in the spring. And once you get into sometime in September, you're also in very good shape. You, you, you typically have enough rain that that you're fine. It's if you wanted to play games in late July and early mid-August, that you would have potentially a problem where you're saying, I, I, I really want to get water down. that you would have potentially a problem where you're saying, I I really want to get water down on this field for a good few days prior to playing a game on it. That's one. That that's one area where our our, let's figure out a portable irrigation system outside of what we're asking the contractor to do. Let's figure something out. That's why having that, and if we know how to how to use it, and if it does, if it's not too labor intensive, and if we're able to use it, we can mitigate that that downside. We we can go there and we can say, well, if there are moments where we want to start playing varsity games in mid-August and we haven't had rain for four weeks, we can use that portable irrigation system with enough effort to get that field ready to go. Um, you know, so that's how you address the the that downside. Um, the next downside is, and it's one that we live with our current fields all the time. If we wanted to re-sod the goal mouth area, which is a pretty common thing for higher end fields, where where you say the area right in front of, whether it's a lacrosse or a soccer goal, gets a ton of abuse, rather than just trying to get more seed on it and hope that we can make it playable, let's cut that area out and re-sod it. Without irrigation, you're at a real disadvantage trying to get that sod um to root well and and to be really healthy. I- if you have irrigation, you're just like, great, it's on a schedule. If if the soil needs water, it's it's on. Um, without it, y- you need a team of people who are going to say, well, we've got this portable irrigation system. We're going to set it up. We're going to roll it out. We're going to each each morning for two weeks and we're going to do that. So y- you've got more labor and and overhead associated with doing a a renovation like that. Um, I think those are the two, those are the two drawbacks and, you know, a- a- enough blood, sweat and tears can overcome it. But the reason that we wanted irrigation was, you know, those those two areas. Um, can we live without it? We can figure it out, but but it's going to take more work to have a comparable field available all the time.
Right. And is is there a reason, Joe, that we wouldn't include or ask this to be included? It would be two things. It would be the irrigation, and I can't remember this. I have to look at the the list of ten. Um, why we wouldn't include this item as an add alternate? Is it that even having contractors bid or offer a bid on this as an add alternate would add cost to other elements of the construction or or laying of the field, for instance?
Well, something that I I could see coming back to you with after C H A has spent more time on this, or perhaps, once we're once we're in the project and we have room for a change order, would be to say, let's see if if we can get the irrigation heads and and the the underground piping. Let's see if we can get that in place, but just not have all the tanks and the interconnection, the permanent in- interconnections. Like, that's an area where it's going to take C H A spending their hours, like, doing these removals and things in order for us to know, like, all right, so and and we would probably want to talk to the contractor and say, is that sixty thousand dollars worth of stuff? Or is it a hundred? And and that's an area where, to get to your question of um, does it make sense to have it as an add alternate? The challenge with add alternates is that um i- i- imagine somebody giving you a Microsoft Word document where you're sitting there and you're like, all right, so what am I bidding? I'm bidding this thing right here. But then you've got this thing that's an add alternate and it threads in with everything else. So I need to either keep that thing in mind and deal with all that complexity and maybe make my base bid so it's higher so that I'm prepared for you accepting it. Or I need to make the add alternate expensive enough that I don't lose my shirt when I need to thread it in. So having, and that's why having add alternates, having lots of things where it's like, well, maybe we'll want this. It that increases the price um as we look forward. So so we're trying to simplify it down so that we get exactly what we want. We don't have a lot of clouds of of complexity. Instead, we're saying did this thing. It's super simple. We've 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 made the documents as short as we can so that you can sharpen your pencil as much as possible and feel really confident in that. That's part of what why we're saying, let's just remove it entirely. Let's not have them dealing with that complexity.
There's there's the butt you gave us and uh and that butt is is making me feel hopeful. And you said there there may be a way to um build into the design or into, you know, into the the bid, whatever, into what what the contractors might bid towards the i- the infrastructure, the subsurface irrigation infrastructure. So you would have that in place so that sometime in the future, you could just connect a water supply to it and away you go. How do we, from what we've got presented at the moment, the motion as amended, what would you recommend if we wanted to give ourselves space for that to take place? Wh- wh- how do we go from here to there? And and where, because we have to make a decision. And what I don't know is, I would love for that to be a possibility in um conversations moving forward, right? The possibility that we could have the infrastructure in place that we could literally tap into at a later date.
I mean, anything is possible with a complicated enough enough motion. I'm just trying to figure out what the what what the simple phrase, you know, it's, you know, eh, and direct the administration and the project team to consider and incorporate ways to add irrigation at a later, I yeah, I it's it's that kind of a thing. I mean, u- ultimately, honestly, what these motions come down to. A- and this sounds strange, I think, but it comes down to what what do Jake and I feel comfortable knowing your directive is and that we're abiding by it and that you're not going to look at us six months from now and say, you didn't do what we told you to do. So that that's ultimately what the motion's for. Um, and 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 the conversations often inform how we go about the tasks that you assign to us through your votes.
Um, if I could, Joe, I mean, the only pushback would be, I think it's important that we're on the record. You know, um, because it's us that ultimately are going to, you know, it's our our it's us that are on the line. Um, so in addition to communicating our aspirations, what we what we would love to certainly see happen, I think we need to be on record actually voting for what we'd like to see. You know, uh, what we'd like to see happen. And so even if it was a a mangled, convoluted motion, I think communicating, you know, that we would like to plan for the possibility that as much of the infrastructure for the irrigation could be put in place through construction. That that's something I I would love for us to be on the record supporting. And then and then however that takes place, you know what I mean? Um, is 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 up to the to the team. I don't know. I'm looking at Julie as my go-to thinking about these things.
Yeah, I I hear you saying um that it somehow makes it into the motion that we're still thinking about the future with an irrigation system and where it's possible in the design phase to allow for that in the best way possible. Please, please consider that. Um, keep that in your consideration set. Um, and it might be, I think I also hear you saying that you will understand, and it might be, we have, we just have to trust the team to figure that out, and they may come back to us and say, we did the best we could, and this is what it was. I don't know how to put that into motion language.
We're looking at you, Christina, or Jo- Joe's good with uh the poetry, but Joe would, I mean, would 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 I guess what we're asking is, does the amended motion need to be amended again? To give cover, I mean, ultimately gives cover to Jake and Joe and the design team to go about this work.
Yeah, if if alongside the the desire to optimize for getting the subbase and the concrete for the bleachers and press box into the project, it could be i- i- incorporate the desire to make irrigation as feasible as possible.
You just have words. You have a way with words, Joe. It's a lot to say. It's just just beautifully beautifully done.
Steve, Curtis, are you okay with the longest motion in the history of the school committee?
I am fine with that.
That sounds like a challenge, Christina.
Jose, not a challenge. Any further discussion? We have a motion that has been moved by Steve and seconded by Curtis. Are we ready to vote? Okay, let's vote.
Oh, an eye.
Conry, eye.
Constantine, eye.
Elfin, by an eye.
Miller, eye. It's tough because I have to skip two people.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you for that great discussion. Thank you for all of that information, Joe. Okay, next up on the agenda is the A P twelfth grade Spanish trip to Argentina in April of twenty twenty-four. We had a lengthy discussion around this in our last meeting, felt very good about it. Um, would someone make like to make a motion?
I would like to move, just to make it easier for the note taker, to have the same people moving and seconding.
Okay, so Steve moves, Curtis seconds. Any um further discussion around the trip?
If I may, I'd like to throw in another couple of details.
Great.
Um, and it's that, given that our hope is to have the trip occur every other year, um, if we do do that, if that is the pattern that we have, then this year's juniors um would not next year have the chance to go on a trip to Argentina. And for that reason, in order to give them the shot at the trip and also to um enlarge the pool of available um potential travelers, we would like to open the trip to students of advanced Spanish who are juniors as well as seniors.
Julia?
I think that's a great idea. I just wonder if we could amend the form or the request to have some sort of adult um student ratio. I, and I don't know what the appropriate one is. I expect the school has ideas around that.
I don't know what the po- specific policy on that is. Um, I do know that uh is a good idea to have both um male and female teachers serving as uh chaperones. But in terms of a a specific number, I I'd actually don't know what that policy is.
Joe or Jake, do you know one or does the insurance company have one or?
I'm looking up whether or not we have that covered in a policy. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I, the last time we asked uh to have a trip approved, I spent a lot of time on that uh travel policy. I don't remember a specific ratio for for adults on the trip.
I'm wondering if, without a specific policy, I mean, I I think we should be naming it. Um, and Joe, I can't imagine you would want to go on a trip where you've got thirty kids and, you know, two chaperones, like, you don't want to put yourself in that position either, but I think we're best off if we have some agreement around that ratio. Um, and I, if there isn't anything that's kind of required by policy or by our insurance company, I wonder if we should be somehow, there should be research or something to like, or if this motion could be amended to say with a faculty-student ratio to be determined by the administration. Um, something, I mean, I I want, for your sake, to help move this forward, but I also don't want to um you know, leave us all open to um some sort of challenge down the line.
No, I agree totally. Um, if I think the likeliest thing is that we'll have um that won't be an issue. We'll have a low enough number of students to where if just all of the Spanish teachers go, then that's that's a big plenty. But uh that is a problem I would love to have. So maybe a, yeah, the the administration could find a number they're they're comfortable with and uh and I'd be happy to comply with that.
Yep, our our policy said it does not prescribe any ratio, so just having it, having it be up to the superintendent to determine, I think is probably the best path.
Um, Steve and Curtis, are you okay with that amendment to the motion? Uh-oh, do we lose Steve? Steve, are you there? That would be no. So Jose, I will go to you. Steve just dropped off.
I'll be very brief. Joe, I just wanted to commend you again for um your presentation on Thursday. Uh, I think it really made a big difference for me in terms of giving me confidence about, you know, what this particular trip is about, the way our students can benefit. Um, you know, the the care and thought that you and your team have put together, you know, in terms of trying to make this trip as inclusive as possible. Um, and and just the um, you know, the the mission of this trip, the uh, the goal of this trip being one that um, you know, could could greatly benefit a lot of our our kids in in ways that you know, they might not otherwise have available to them had had trips like this, or particularly like this one uh be available to them. It it and I'll just for record, you know, it does stand in in contrast to some other presentations that we've had regarding um, you know, overseas field trips. I I thank you for all the all the detail you gave us.
You're welcome. Thank you for saying so.
Steve has returned and it is seven forty-one.
Yes. And I actually wa- I was fine. I was trying to say I was fine. I was fine, but uh, you you couldn't hear me, so I switched to uh using Zoom. Yes, I am fine.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Oh, an eye.
Conry, eye.
Constantine, eye.
Elfin, by an eye.
Miller, eye.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you all very much.
Um, other items? Jake, do we have confirmation on the October date or are we still waiting for a couple of responses?
We are still waiting for a couple of responses, but but i- it's looking like Tuesday, October seventeenth.
Okay.
Is is a day that works for for
the majority.
The seven of you so far. Uh, if anything changes, Will, Will, when I've heard back from another person or two, I will get that out to you in an email, but um if if you all who are on here could sort of tentatively mark uh Tuesday, October seventeenth as uh the regular October school committee meeting. And thank you for for responding to the doodle poll. That was really helpful.
Great. Thank you, Jake. And any agenda requests from the committee? For that potentially October seventeenth meeting? Okay, hearing none. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Steve?
I will, I will so move to help the note taker.
And Curtis seconds. All in favor?
Oh, an eye.
Conry, eye.
Constantine, eye.
Elfin, by an eye.
Miller, eye.
Thank you. It is seven forty-three and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Really appreciate it.
Christina, I will keep an eye on my email in case